We need to keep our taxpayer's money right here in Carroll County. And then coupled somewhat with that, thousands of dollars have been spent to date as taxpayer's money again for no real progress. I feel like we need to be proactive, be good stewards of the people's money, and display progress in moving forward with this project. The unfortunate, and I always try to avoid being cynical, I always try to be positive, but I know in our business, eventually, we could potentially face that class action lawsuit. I've just recently learned a couple of different things I'll point out. Not only is Vigo County in Terre Haute under a federal class action mandate by a federal judge, Carroll County Jail, I've also learned that Henry County, which is very, very similar to our county jail, is also under a federal mandate. Gibson County, just north of Evansville, is under a federal mandate. So, the issue is that as we continue to have unfortunately failed jail inspections, it puts us on the radar for Leninians, potential inmates, to reach out to the ACLU and to consider the possibility of filing a suit against us. So, it's something we've got to have in back of our mind. And then lastly, I'm going to, Tim, I'm going to borrow your words you used a minute ago in the highway discussion, and that is, we need a long-term fix instead of a mandate. And that fits for Carroll County Jail. So, that's what I have this morning. If you have any questions made, you can ask now or whatever, always available. But I'd like to offer Sheriff Saylor's opportunity at least to present the report he did this morning and offer what Fulton County has, as a positive way, has gone for them.
Mike, I don't want to derail us here on the commissary report. It's kind of hard to tell the way the document's reported, but you have a beginning and balance and an ending cash balance, and then deposits and disbursements.
Right.
But, I mean, your cash balance is dear or lower than it began, and it's done that for two periods now, I believe. Are you just carrying higher inventory levels? Because, I mean, you're continuing to spend, but, I mean, so, I guess my question is, are those disbursements, commissary disbursements, or are those disbursements you're using commissary funds for, for the department?
Oh.
Okay.
And I'll couple with that, Josh, if I may, simple logic, I guess, in my mind, our jail numbers, less individuals buying product up over our commissary.
Sure. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Well, I just want, so, I mean, we're kind of trending in that direction. I mean, I assume that you're, you're spending for the department, spending is state somewhat stacked, and then your general revenue is decreasing, so that's causing you to burn cash. But, you know, at this rate, I'm just not sure how long it is. I guess my broader question is, you know, I think if this pattern were to continue, in a year or two in time, we'd be at a low cash balance for the commissary fund. Do we need to be looking at, you know, the things that are being funded out here, having to come out of being, this money being dependable to fund what you're funding out here?
You mean out of, say, county general?
Well, some, like, I mean, like, if this money goes away, you have steady spending needs, like.
Yeah. That's why I rely heavily on, as you well know, I have several funds. As an example, there's the Sheriff's Trading Fund, that I pay a lot of the funding, annual funding and various funds from the deputies out of that. And so, the, I guess the optimistic approach that I take toward is, again, it could be argued either way, but when our deal numbers start to swing back up, I anticipate our assets to increase as far as it relates to commissary costs. Again, we have individual purchases of hours, I would say, to buy products off of our commissary funds.
I also kind of noticed that report, and actually, from an accounting aspect, do you actually know what your commissary profits for the year? Because you always start with the beginning balance, so, and do you actually know what your commissary makes? And you know that you're charging correct and...
Charging for products?
Right.
Yeah.
Because what I'm seeing is the same thing Josh is seeing, you really don't get a year in pop or loss, the way you're doing the report.
They kind of do, but you also have all the baggage, not baggage, but the non-commissary spending, the...
Right. And I think, I think it just comes down to if it was, like, broke out a little different line than it was, and you kind of see what you're profiting from here through just the commissary, and then subline your other stuff that's coming out.
It's just kind of, I mean, because you don't know what inventory is.
Correct.
You, I mean, it could be this, I mean, you could have this cash in the bank, but zero inventory, or you could have $20,000 in inventory, you don't, you need, so, anyway, it doesn't matter. I mean, I appreciate you doing the work, it's just like, my broader question is, is there going to be a collapse of this, and then there's going to be an external funding?
I guess to answer that, I'll say I sure hope not. And at this point, I don't, I don't think there will be. The other thing we get to, just, and I mentioned it obviously, we mail in remanded additional products that individuals in our jail purchase, and we've also increased some of the costs on the products, on the commissary, so.
And the reasoning for doing that is that kind of helps you then, you know, if, I'm just going to shoot out a number, if you made $10,000 per year, then you would probably budget that that's $10,000 that you have to spend next year.
Right.
I mean, these are your running, you're behind.
Right.
But if you don't ever have that starting point and that heading that you're really not knowing, I think that it's just be worked out separate, then you would know exactly, oh, okay, we made 10 grand, and I'm going to pull this business out of that, and you wouldn't have to guess in two years if it's going to be depleted.
Right.
It's just a matter of...
Operation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Operation.
Thanks, Josh.
Yeah. If you don't mind, Sheriff Saylor's...
Please.
...
Morning.
Morning.
Appreciate the opportunity to come down and talk to you this morning. Tobe had indicated that we'd like to share, let me share with what we're doing in Fulton County with our project. And I guess, brought this up to the commissioners of Adams County for them Tuesday through meeting as well, but Fulton County and Carroll County share more than the state per 25 run through the county. So, I, in a previous life, had been in finance and actually served four years in the county council, so I appreciate what you guys are doing for that aspect. But, a few years back, we kind of looked at demographics of other counties similar to our size, and really, if you lay Carroll County and Fulton County side by side, demographically, we're rural farming community, some industry, population, economic factors, we're all pretty close, real close. So, but, I guess my, my point this morning is, again, what Tobe asked me, Sheriff's likely to ask me, we started our project, looking at it back about 2015, when I came into the sheriff. Our jail was also relatively close to the same age as your jail. Ours opened in the summer 1985, one of the last probably linear jails that was built in Indiana. And what I mean by linear, linear is, it's just like if you go into a school, you go down the hallway, you have to open the door and walk in versus the style that's built today, okay, with the pot style. So, we had, ours too, was built for 36, back in the early 2000s. Our sheriff got approval from the state at that time, and we went in a double bunk, okay? Well, there's a problem there that a lot of people haven't really thought about, as far as following jail standards, is yes, we double bunk, so we put more inmates in the same space, okay? So, in reality, we aren't compliant, if you're truthful about it, okay? So, we've got more people and less space versus what the jail standards say. So, fast forward, there's been some modifications. We also went through a process, my predecessor said, hey, let's create a work release center inside the jail. We had the opportunity to move across the street into what used to be the old post office, postal service, and build a new office down the, down about three or four blocks away. So, it's that empty, local contractor bought it, paid some office space, so we moved over there, moved our dispatch and our administration over to that part. I'm here to tell you, that's been a real pain, or you're not in the same building. As sheriff, you know, you're constitutionally responsible for your jail, so I'm relying on my jail commander, and a lot of times, there's things that happen that we find out maybe a little later. So, it's, it's true that being in the one building you're in, but besides that, there's, there was, you know, the modifications that were done, just, it was like throwing a mandate on, to be quite honest. We had a lot of, I call them infrastructural issues, you know, 30, 35-year-old pipes daily, plumbing issues, electrical issues, heating and cooling issues, and our maintenance, I mean, I'm sure the same thing. Our detention equipment was original, for what it was put in, major cost if you can get anybody to come in and work on it, to be quite honest. So, anyway, I had some ideas, and I'm a firm believer in show and tell, the commissioners through buildings, so I'd ask them to come over. We walked through, we discussed some things, we started a process of looking at some things over. Fast forward, we had a feasibility study completed, that really opened everybody's eyes, because then the cost, and this was done in 2007, P, we wrote down our costs in about 12, 14 minutes, bring everything in, show that we've been ramping up, okay? And that wasn't adding any more beds. We too were right across from the courthouse, we're landlocked, we're on three quarters of a half block, so the footprint of anything we had to change, we were talking, it was going to be really tight. And then, down the road, there's no place to expand. We talked about adding maybe another 50 beds, which would have got us up to roughly 120, and give you the 8%. I'm here to tell you, three years ago now, I was, I had 143 people booked in my jail that originally felt for 36. We physically had 115 in here, and I was trying to find bed space wherever I could. We had 25 of the Steuben County, which is up Angola, up the northeast part of the county, two hours away. Finally, got Miami County, had some bed space, we had some down there, and I was paying them free, because most, most sheriffs, at that time, it was $35 reimbursement from the state, I was paying them for it, because he's 20 minutes down the road, and it was a lot closer. So, we started this discussion, we formed a deal committee, we had the judge, certain court judge, the county attorney, the prosecuting attorney, commissioner, councilman, myself, and we got two stakeholders from our community, taxpayers. And, you know, when we first started that discussion, we had about 75% of that committee said, we don't need to do it. Okay, you know, that's fine. Well, then, fast forward, we get the compliance from the state, we're passing the jail inspection. And the key issues, which have been pointed out years in the past, you don't have enough room, you don't have enough space, you don't have, you know, this, and I couldn't argue with it, it's all true. So, they finally come around the committee, decided, hey, we need to probably work on this. So, we went through the process, we interviewed several architects, we interviewed, and ended up with, with Elavatas, their architect. I'm here to tell you, they've done a wonderful job. I went seven times over to Adams County. We end up building that prototype, and by doing that, and I'm not going to speak for Elavatas, but it saved us a bunch of money on architecture. We interviewed several construction managers, the same as Tobe, and Garmon was the one, and they've done us a good job. Garmon, the commissioners wanted to go with the guaranteed price, and that was something new that the state legislators had passed versus the traditional bid bill, you know, having control of your cost on that. So, with the guaranteed pricing model, we were locked in. We went to bid last December, a year ago, December, and we come in at $23 million, 79,000 and some change, okay? Right now, we start, we work around April 1st, we're in dirt, if you will, we're about 50, 55% late, our goals being done by July, and anticipate the end sometime in October. I'm here to tell you, we've not had a first change order, substantial change order, there's been a few modifications here and there, but as far as change orders, it's going to cost you money, and we're past that point. And I guess, like I say, Garmon has been good about making sure that we're on schedule with things on that. So, I, you know, if they do you a good job, I'll sing their praises, if they don't, I'll be the first to tell you about it, too, so. But Elavatas and Garmon have worked well together, actually, everybody on the project, even the subs have worked well together, and if they found a way to save us some money, they have. Now, I know there's, you know, bed size, again, originally, and maybe my numbers, and I realize that can change from county to county, but I go back to House Bill 1006, which was a big pain in the sheriff's rear ears, if you will, sorry, Judge. So, but, yeah, there was a real, real reconstitution of criminal code at that point, and so now all of a sudden, we're holding level sixes. I, right now, my, I presented to my council last night, and my commissioners earlier in the week, might be reading reports as well, and our, our DOC numbers that we're holding, what, 150% versus last year. So, you know, depending on the charge, and how long they have to serve, well, normally they could went to DOC and get them out of the jail. Now, they could be up to a three-year max, sitting in your jail, where jail was originally just, it's meant for a temporary holding place. So, you know, we're, we're fighting that as well, and I'm, you know, the pendulum swings back and forth on the criminal justice side, and, again, I don't have a personal ball to determine when, when that pendulum's going to swing back, but with the pre-trial release and the cash bond stuff, and, and part of that, don't get me wrong, part of that needs to be addressed. But, you know, people still come back to jail, and we have a lot of EP offenders, and a lot of them, we really don't on a first-name basis, because they continue to come back, and come back. But, when we got to the size, I guess, in my number, and I went back with the feasibility study that we had done, and talking with Department of Corrections, and they were looking at that time anywhere from a 4% to 7% increase, so I kind of was very conservative, and I just went out 20 years, and I said, here, we could physically be close to 200. Give or take, it's not, it's the best guess at that point, I guess is what I'm saying. But based on historical numbers, we were going up anywhere from 7% to 15% a year in our population. Two years ago, I was at 115 after the daily in my jail. Last year dropped because of some things. This past year, it's dropped even more because of COVID, we haven't had near trials, because the trials have been suspended by the Supreme Court, a lot of pre-trial, and a lot of other things are in the mix. So, but I, I see that once this kind of loosens up, this COVID thing, I can see us starting to increase our numbers, because we've got several that are out on the second or third time and violations, so.
How many beds do you, did you build?
We are basically the whole complex, and everything, and I'll preface this, everything that the state considers a bed is attached to a wall, well-matured off the floor. We're going to have 230 beds. Now, heard the groans. So, we originally were looking at a lot smaller, but, you know, we had a lot of folks who sat there in our community and said, you know, you guys have fought your jail for several years, let's build it big enough, build it right, and build it for the future. So, I throw that out there. We had a lot of discussion about this, as everybody does, it's part of the process, I'm not going to lie. And, you know, my commissioners were coming back going, well, let's build 130 beds or 120 beds, and I'm sitting there going, that's fine, but in five years, you're the ones that's going to have to go back, and the councils, the taxpayers will go, oops, we screwed up, because now we're going to have to add on. And I point out, the neighbor to the north, my neighbor to the south, Cass County, they're on their third rebuild now since 1999, okay? We actually had, one of our certain court judges involved in secondary build because of the lawsuits, he was assigned a special judge and ruled that, yes, you'd be, they had more beds, Doug Morton, Doug Morton of Fulton County. And now, they're, they're back in, and they're adding another 150 beds, which they're building expanding. Marshall County to my north, built their jail, they're four years ago, and two years ago, they were max capacity, and the sheriff up there's been trying to get an addition to add on, because their design allowed them to add on, and everybody's fighting on that, too. And he's, and now he's under a lawsuit, which is why you forgot Tobe, Marshall County. So, you know, it's just a matter, it's a ticking timeline, you know, but there's hard decision, and I'm not here to tell you, you know, what to do, right and money in every community you need, and we get that. But, our decision was, our general population is actually 198, and then we put in a modification, which Elavatas, with, again, we can scale that, move that however we want it, because that was some of the first questions I asked, and what can I change, what can I move, what if I don't like this, can we add this? Yeah, we can do whatever. But, we added a, basically, a dormitory, we took some cells out, added a third dormitory, and which actually got us more beds, that was a benefit. The flip side is, we moved an area out of the detention area, which I can kind of use as work release as well, because they're almost at a trusty level, if you will, at least legitimately.
Mm-hmm.
The amount of trust you have.
I've already heard this one.
But, we didn't add the work release component on the side, Adams County had that, and the reason why is, you know, fewer of any costs, and at that time, we decided, we're not going to add that, that's something to be added later, if we have to need to do. But, the last time I was at Adams County, again, in the verge from county to county, they only had, they had like a 30-bed work release center, and they had two people in there. And I'm sitting there going, that's not worth it. In my county, the most we've ever had is about 10, and we started a work release back in about 2003, a sheriff from there, that, and we ran it, and then my predecessor, when we moved, we made an area for work release, but we ended up using it more for, for low level detention at that point, and, again, I think that could be had in most, during my tenure, my administration, about six. The one discussion which the commissioners have to have yet, everybody wants to know, well, what are you going to do with your old facility? And, again, they're, they're going to have to put some money, they're going to have to spend some money on there, but, you know, since we don't have the pressure, if you will, on the, in the infrastructure, we could possibly use that for work release. It's separate from the jail, the state, my understanding, with work release, if you run it through community corrections, if you get a standalone building, the state will rent that building, generate some revenue for the county, and then, if you run it through community corrections, the state will also fund that to operate it, as far as the staff in one pot. So, that's some discussion we have to have yet. The other option we looked at with Elavatas was, where we put our site, we actually bought 15 and a half acres, and I'm here to tell you that I probably caught more help, or heard more about what we paid per acre on the edge of town, because it was farming ground, but it's kind of in a development area, we paid $20,000 an acre, $300,000 is what we paid to the ground, but I'll tell you, it's the best location to be found, you can get utilities and everything else there, and you go a half mile over in an area that's being more currently developed, they're paying $150,000 an acre. So, I thought we got a bargain, okay? Just saying. But, we've probably heard more about that than the actual project itself since, not at the initial. But, again, our project has been going well, and there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts to it, and I, you know, sympathize with you going through this process, because I've been there. And, but also know that, you know, we too kicked the can down the road too many times. It should have been, it started to talk about 20 years ago. That would be the other big thing, sir, is why aren't you putting money back for this and wait another 10 years? Instead of going, you wait another 10 years, you're going to have a federal judge telling you, you're going to do this, like a lot of other counties, unfortunately. But, you know, that's, that's kind of where we're at. And I would, I would also extend, I extended the invitation to commissioners, because of COVID, a lot of jails are shut down right now. Again, I went to Adams County several times and toured your facility, I liked what I saw, so we can work with that design, and by doing that, it saved us some money. But, since we're under construction, I've given about four or five tours already for other counties, so you're a half hour up the road, 25 minutes, more than welcome to come up and take a look at what we've got. Not saying we're doing it the right way, but it's what we felt worked for us, and so I extend that invitation out to the folks as well. So, any questions?
Did Steel Cell build your cell earlier?
Yes, Steel Cell put those in, and I actually went down and toured the facility. When Poly Jail, they had their conference in Indianapolis, and I went, and they had a mock-up there. And, and again, I stand there, and I was looking at it, and the gentleman says, what do you think of my cell? I said, it's great, but how's it built? And he's like, well, what do you mean? I said, well, you can, you can think of a lot of things. And he kind of took offense, come to find out it was the actual owner. And he said, Sheriff, you're more welcome to come down and tour my facility. So, actually, Poly Jail scheduled that, and there've been several sheriffs now that went out and toured and looked at that. And I'm here to tell you, and I told this to the architect here a couple days ago, we too had a situation where the masonry style cells, we actually had an inmate take a spork and start getting the ground out, and was able to remove a block before we got caught in the old jail. And with the steel cell, it's a steel thing, and it's, I'm tickled to death, and I'll, and again, they're, they're well-constructed and detention rooms are fantastic. And the cost, and, and, again, we looked at the cost, trust me, we did down this path too, but the cost-wise, from the standpoint of labor, materials, the gomasonry versus steel cell, and your construction time, it was in favor of going with the steel cell. The construction time's cut by, I don't think, a lot, two-thirds.
It's quite a long time, yeah, for it.
Even those mason guys do a heck of a job, and they throw up all pretty quick, but, you know, you get time, material, and labor, you know, for that, and, again, they deliver and set them up, and, and, you know, just cut down that much more time on, on construction costs, so.
Thank you for coming down, Sheriff. I appreciate your time and appreciate your perspective.
And again, if you want to come up and take a tour, give us a tow.
What, you're open this July?
This July.
So, what's the, where are you at, I mean, is the shell all done, and you guys are going inside, or?
Oh, yeah. Everything directed, and, again, from what I've spoken, we were going to have change orders, it would have happened then, and how you should be involved in financing some construction costs of our construction projects, and it's true. But, yeah, we're, they're doing all the interior now. I think they're going to finish up the last mixture work in the intake area this week, and it's already started drywall on the administration side. And in our project, not only just the sheriff's office, we use our dispatch as well out there, and then, we also, one of the things we added, which was unique, because we, our coroner, we, we don't have a morgue through the hospital, hospital kept moving, and all of them, too, with a cooler, they kept moving it from here to here to here, and as an elected official, I would compare this as taxpayer was upset, because it just wasn't very professional. So, one of the things we talked about, and we had that on the back end part of the building, I think it was about a $300,000 cost, and, so, she's got a garage, pull into, whatever, walk-in cooler, they've got a little area that you can process, and a little area to keep with the family, EV, and that sort of thing, so. So, we tried to think outside the box, we tried to make it as personal as we can in the future. And, and, again, the design, if you ever have to expand down the road, you can, and it's not going to affect your operations, with the design that we use with Elavatas. And, again, that can be scaled to whatever. And again, that can be scaled to whatever you need. But again, give it to Tobe if you want to come up and, and take a look. Be more happy to have you come up and go through it, so.
Thanks again, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sheriff. We have two, three, a couple more here. Would anybody be opposed to a five-minute recess?
Everybody's pipe's leaky?
Yes. I know, I know one person's in it.
I only took two minutes.
I'll for a five-minute recess.